Thank you. Okay, item five, reconvene to public session. We are now reconvene to public session. Attendance, roll call, all board members are present and accounted for. Public comments. Pursuant to board policy number twenty-three fifty, public comment may be limited to five minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point of the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point of the meeting for open forum on non-agenda items. All the comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom from the recording secretary or online. Moving on to the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Buffalo, will you please lead us?
Turn, place the flag and begin with me. My pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item nine, agenda approval, make your motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Open forum on non-agenda items, and I have Dr. Jeffrey Cooper.
Good evening, thank you for listening to what I have to say. I'm Dr. Jeffrey Cooper. I teach chemistry here at Antelope Valley College. I've been here for thirteen years. I'm here on behalf of Isabel Muschamp, who is a new hire in automotive technology. And I believe she has been asked to resign. And I met Isabel through the opening day Zoom sessions. I noticed in the chat box, she said that I'm new here. So I reached out and said, welcome to AVC, I'm Jeff Cooper. Send me any questions you have about the place. And then later, I was asked to be her mentor. So over the semester, we have spent time learning how to use things like Canvas and my AVC and Banner Web and all of those things that we have online. And recently, she was asked to resign. I believe Isabel has a lot of enthusiasm. She loves this place, she loves her students. I think she's an asset to the college. And I believe in some of her observations, she was not assessed fairly. For example, on one night, the air compressor in the shop was not working, and so she had to resort to plan B. And so I don't believe she had enough support from her department. As a new employee, I believe she needed a lot more support and a lot more help, which she was not receiving. And I don't believe some of the other members of her department are nearly as enthusiastic as she is about the subject and the topic. So I believe she's being treated unfairly. So I believe that she should be retained, and her division and department need to pay a little bit more attention to helping each other instead of trying to boot each other out. So that's really all I have to say. Thank you for hearing what I have to say.
Thank you. This is Isabel Muschamp.
Is this all being recorded for YouTube? Because I have people that say we're having technical difficulties.
Yes, it's being recorded and all uploaded as soon as.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we're not talking.
No, it's quite all right. I was just curious, I have people texting and they're wondering what's going on. Hello, everyone. I love my job and have worked tirelessly and with passion to establish an automotive technology department to help what seems to be a neglected and frankly overlooked body of students within Los Angeles County. I believe that having the complete picture, you will understand that I am an asset to the automotive department at Antelope Valley College and shall remain a full member of it in good standing if allowed a chance to serve my community. In a time of great difficulty and hardship, struggling with a pandemic that discontinued the normal procedures of daily life during a national quarantine, I have endeavored to educate and assist students using technology on a virtual platform live within the department. The task proved difficult and vexatious due to the technical and physical challenges that it presented. As a newly hired member of the department, teaching full, real-life class sessions and virtual sessions, I found the entire virtual educational platform stressful and confusing for my students. Therefore, I resolved not only to instruct students full-time, I also launched advertisements of said department to connect students and automotive enthusiasts through social platforms such as Instagram and Facebook. I was determined to help educate students amid growing concerns of low enrollment that would eventually cancel several of the courses. After a few tiresome months, I was able to reach out to other college disciplines in U-Hazy Hall for guidance and assistance since my Department of Automotive Technology and the Career Technical Education Division has become a stressful place and a hostile work environment. Fortunately, I was able to set in motion other educational means, the creation of Trades Math with assistance from Professor Jane Bauer, who I was introduced to by my mentor on campus, Dr. Jeffrey Cooper. Needless to say, the Trades Math Educational Program Platform, excuse me, proved to be utterly encouraging for my students. As mentioned in the collective bargaining agreement, Article eight, Section four point four point one and two point three point two were not followed nor heeded properly, and I feel that I'm being wrongfully terminated long before the process of tenure even began in spite of all the honest work and effort I have put into this job. To add further insult, I was never given the end of semester evaluation report to sign. Students were not introduced to my semester evaluation to complete by my tenure review committee and which disregarded the department's laws and regulation. My ratings as a teacher were high with students attending my classes. However, during a long video conference which happened recently, I was presented with false facts and accusations. At that time, I realized my professional rights were being ignored with wrongful accusations stated. I was intimidated by Antelope Valley College staff to resign against my will. I was threatened with my teaching reputation, the very profession I hold sacred in my heart and believe it to be the most essential part of our society. And I'd like to end with a prayer for Antelope Valley College and for the Automotive Technology Department and for the Career Technical Education Division. People are often unreasonable and uncentered, self-centered. Forgive them anyway. If you are kind to people, sorry, if you are kind, people may accuse you of ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you are successful, you will win some false friends and some true enemies. Succeed anyway. If you are honest, people may cheat you. Be honest anyway. What you spend years building, someone could destroy overnight. Build anyway. If you find serenity and happiness, they may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today, people will often forget tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the best, give the world the best you have, and it may never be enough. Give your best anyway. You see, in the final analysis, it is between you and God. It was never between you and them anyway. This was found written on the walls of Mother Teresa's home for children in Calcutta. And I couldn't describe to you how much I harmonize with that prayer. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Mr. David Adams.
Good evening, I'm here for two reasons. One, with regards to Ms. Muschamp, I will just keep the regards that I, the comments I said during closed session. There's nothing further to add, I think. I appreciate your time to allow me to be there for that matter. It means a lot. On a, on a level more personal to me and some of our other faculty, some of us are lucky enough still to make enough money at this college and put money away besides for our pension starts. If you're in the private workforce, I think it'd be called a 401K contribution. In the public workforce, you can put money into two things, a 403B and a 457. I teach at the college, I know a little bit about it. I'm here today because contributions that are being taken out of my paycheck are taking upwards of two and a half to three weeks to hit my account. That's just too long. If the money's being taken out of my account, why is it taking that long? Now, I've worked with the good people over at HR and payroll, and this is not to bash anyone. The director of HR, Jennifer Burkett, the head of HR, Jennifer Burkett, the director of HR, Harmony Mueller, they both do great work. And what I'm simply asking is that the board try to encourage HR and payroll to find a more modern system, if you will, so that contributions can be taken out automatically and gone to the, I guess, the processing. Right now, there's a manual check that sits for several days until a FedEx, it's FedExed, and then it sits for several days more until it ultimately hits. I want to say November, my money from my November thirtieth paycheck hit on the eighteenth. I want to say it was maybe the fifteenth, the month before, some months, it's the twentieth. And it may not sound like a big deal to you, but luckily enough, I'm in a position where I can contribute nearly fifteen hundred dollars a month for each paycheck. That's almost three thousand dollars per month. I calculated based on this year's stock market gains, I lost nearly ten thousand dollars based on the timing. And if you'd like to, I'd be able to show you the calculations. That's a lot of money I lost. And I'm just simply asking that here we are in the year 2021, we could find a more automated system so that the money just gets there a little bit sooner. This is again, not to bash all the hard work that everyone does here at AVC. I just didn't have to check on a daily basis, hoping, wishing my money got there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Leah Farrell. Via Zoom.
Yeah, I'm here. So my name's Leah Farrell. I'm a student at AVC. I have just been having a hard time like getting in contact with anybody at the offices. And I just feel like, like after how long we've been in this pandemic, I feel like something should have been figured out. And I just hope like that we can maybe figure out like another system. Like, I don't know if like if like staff is short, like if you have to hire more people or if like we could have people working from home, because it's just ridiculous, the respond time to anything, and then you leave messages and nobody calls you back. I just think it's important, especially people who are like on like time, like deadlines for like programs, whatever, classes, I just think it's important to get back to the students. And yeah, so if we could figure out a better system, I don't know if we need to hire more people or what, but you guys are the first people I've been able to talk to at all in forever. So yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Tino Garcia.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. How we open and close gatherings matters. How we open and close semesters and terms, academic and political matters. Openings are supposed to set a tone and priorities and establish confidence. With this in mind, I want to make a few comments about spring opening day. Thank you to Dr. Vines for emphasizing during your remarks the important contributions that student equity have been making and will be making this semester and this summer. In particular, thank you for shining a light on the achievements and efforts of our EMOSIA leaders and students. I too want to recognize and celebrate the courageous and necessary work of Rochelle Hightower, our Director for Student Equity, and of all the other workers and leaders at AVC who are trailblazing for equity for students and for all of us. Thank you, Dr. Vines and President Knutson, for making student equity feel seen and valued in that forum. Thank you to the President's Office also for holding the session on finding confidence in conflict on opening day. The session is important in terms of identifying and wrestling with the lack of communication and trust we've been dealing with at AVC, especially around key issues and conflicts that many people prefer to stay silent about, such as racism, abuses of power and equity. I look forward to hearing more about the efforts of Kwame Christian and his work with leadership and others on our campus. Speaking of issues around lack of communication and trust, I would like to call our attention to something not spoken about on opening day or since. I had hoped that President Knutson might address, however briefly, the events of Wednesday, January sixth, given their magnitude and gravity. The President may have strong feelings about it and may share some of my own, I don't know. For those who are new, we know that President Knutson was willing to publicly call out a student for questioning the relevance of the President's personal stories about the President's experience as a veteran, among other things, which were shared campus-wide. President Knutson, in another campus-wide email, was keen to criticize the student because they were not a veteran and therefore apparently had no right to question the relevance of the President's stories. But here is my question. If President Knutson was willing to call out the perceived disrespect towards veterans and assert his own authority to speak out about these matters, and why stay silent on the recent violent attack on the democratic values and institutions that veterans have fought to uphold and protect? Among the litany of abuses that the right-wing extremists perpetrated, some erected gallows with a noose, one wore a Camp Auschwitz shirt, some killed police inside the Capitol, and some beat an officer outside with an American flag. Do we not see the broken glass in broad daylight? Why stay silent about an open insurrection and domestic terrorism? Why not condemn white supremacy and those who support it, including POTUS, who incited them and loves them, apparently? As either a veteran or a leader, is now the time for silence? I am afraid that our silence could legitimize the armed insurrection and the lawlessness it engenders and is engendered by. Our silence, each of ours speaks volumes. Would John Lewis have been silent? What would the conscience of Congress, who many of us and President Knutson hold in high esteem, have said to those who he serves and who look to him as a leader? As a college, how can we implore everyone to voting and civic engagement but not decrie the attacks on the election and the results and on the representatives carrying out their duties and on the police who are supposed to protect them? Now is not the time for business as usual. We are in yet another moment in which white supremacy has stormed its way into the highest chambers of power, and those occupying those chambers were and not just an angry fringe mob, but a mob that includes lawmakers, executives, donors, police and military. They say Wednesday, January sixth was not an ending, but another beginning. So addressing the situation and letting us know where our president stands as a president, if not as a veteran, would help us to begin to reestablish trust among students, staff and faculty. So we would know our leadership stands against racism, fascism and terrorism, foreign and domestic. Opening days, opening session, or the Finding Confidence in Conflict session would have provided a relevant forum to address the events of January sixth to the campus and to give us confidence as we confront this violent conflict. An email or some other statement is called for now. Our ABC philosophy claims we are, quote, "uniquely capable of responding to the social and cultural needs of the Antelope Valley," unquote.
Mr. Garcia, you have about thirty seconds.
I know others, California Community College leaders have issued welcome-back statements calling out the violent insurrection and white supremacy in terms much longer and sharper than my own. They're responding to their campus's needs and giving their campus, their campus confidence by reaffirming their philosophy and values. Now might also be a good time to put up the Black Lives Matter banner on our college website. For as the student who reminded you, who you called out, remind, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Karina Georgie.
Hi, folks. I'm Dr. Karina Carpetian-Georgie. I'm a sociology faculty and sociologist. And I'm here to say, and by the way, thank you for all your comments this evening, to everybody that's commented, and Leah, I'm here to support you if you ever need support. But it's imperative that AVC directly addresses the events of January sixth along with all of its overtones of white supremacism and nationalism. We currently have two pandemics surging through our society, and one parallel between these illnesses connect overwhelmingly, and it's people of color who are disenfranchised, who are working class. I didn't need any evidence, I didn't need to figure out, doesn't take a PhD, even though I have one, to figure out that the most adversely impacted folks are going to be the people who are the most vulnerable in society, and that are people of color who are working class, and that, those are our students. And I'm concerned for the psychological welfare of our students. Today in class, I received, actually, I wasn't even going to speak this evening, but I received this loud applause on Zoom. I've never received a standing ovation on Zoom before. If you've ever experienced that, it was interesting. Because I said, just simply said, that anyone who says that we're all, are part of the human race is using this cop-out blurb to overcompensate for the fact that they are incapable of discussing race, ethnicity and nationalism in any kind of critical manner. And I, not only did I receive an applause, but people's family members started huddling around my Zoom like I was FDR suddenly. Our ABC students deserve the same respect, recognition and denouncement of such extreme forms of violence and racist rhetoric as the high schoolers are receiving. Today, the Los Angeles Times reported that the LA Unified District is drafting a statement to address insurrection and the aftermath of January sixth, while the Long Beach Unified District sent out guidelines to teachers, explains to them how to address concepts regarding equality, basic rights, civic action, entitled "A Tumultuous Day for Our Nation" by Superintendent Joel Baker. So why don't our ABC students get the same kind of recognition and acknowledgement? When ABC does not appropriately and swiftly address explicit forms of violence and makes students who already are marginalized feel isolated, more abused and more insignificant. And not addressing this toxicity is also agreeing like to violent racists that their language and actions are okay as they masquerade around as patriots. And that's some basic socio-psychology for you folks out there, that this is what people do to not acknowledge the fact they're perpetuating racist rhetoric, and they are themselves racist. And as a social scientist, it is vile and insulting to explain this behavior away as a difference of opinion or observation, because I didn't need to see the guy wearing the Camp Auschwitz t-shirt. I didn't need to see the guy who's choking a black woman as he was trying to violently enter the state Capitol. But I did not need to see that, because we empirically have enough evidence to support the fact that racism is rampant in our society. I don't need to see anymore on television. I am not shocked by the events that took place. I'm not shocked that one out of eight people are dying from the pandemic now. These are not shocking statistics, that the first kid that dies is a seventeen-year-old Latinx kid who's turned away from a clinic because they told him to go to a hospital, and that kid and his family didn't know how to evoke his emergency medical rights. I'm not shocked. Here's my question, what will it take for ABC to seriously reexamine their policies on anti-racist language? I know we have AP three four three zero, but the scary part about AP three four three zero is they have to determine, they have to come to a conclusion, a point where they have to determine what racist language is. And I don't have confidence that people are competent enough to identify racist language based on what I've seen and witnessed in faculty exchanges, emails, a staff that are completely unacceptable, intolerable, inappropriate. Three forty-three, three zero says that there is a prohibition of harassment. Prohibition means it's against the law. So where is?
You have thirty seconds, Dr.
Where is the law? Thank you. Um, so I'm not here to complain, I'm here to take action. And so I, along with our amazing Student Equity Center, I'm willing to do whatever I can as a faculty member who specializes in these topics as an expert to help our students. That's all I care about is our students. I'm not doing this job because I just happen to love the desert so much. I'm doing this job because I love our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those were all the cards I had for the open forum on non-agenda items. Moving on to item eleven, report of closed session action. A motion was made by Ms. Gaines, seconded by Ms. Harvey, and with a four-to-one vote, the board approved discipline dismissal release of employee number twenty dash twenty-one slash E dash zero zero three pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven. Four yes votes, Mr. Reeves voted no, and so it passed. Moving on to item twelve, consent agenda. Make your motion to approve the consent agenda items by unanimous consent.
Mr. President, I would like to pull two items, please.
I'm sorry, what?
I'd like to pull two items on consent.
Sure, let's get the second first.
Second.
Thank you. And discussion, so Mr. Reeves.
Thirteen point five, thirteen point six.
Those are action items, those are not consent items. You have no, you're not pulling anything from consent agenda at this point.
Yes, I am.
No, thirteen five and thirteen six are action items. Okay?
Yeah.
So consent agenda can move forward.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Moving on to item thirteen, action items. Thirteen point one, consideration of California Community College Trustees, CCT, for an election for 2021. Make your motion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen point two, approval of contract with the Foundation for California Community Colleges on behalf of Early Care and Education Pathways to Success, ECEPTS. A fiscal partner of the Foundation to carry out the purposes of three separate grant and/or funding agreements. Make your motion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Advice? Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Item thirteen point three, approval of ADORs Medical Group Contract for Student Athlete Physicals and Slideline Coverage. Make your motion.
So move. Second.
Mr. Buffalo can have the motion, Ms. Gaines can have the second. Any discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Mr. Reeves, are you abstaining on item thirteen?
Yes, sir, I abstain.
Thank you. That passes with four yes votes with one abstention. Item thirteen point four, approval to extend the use of the SNAP-on Cooperative Agreement, okay, dash MA, dash eight one eight, dash zero four zero, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and utilize for automotive workstations. Make your motion.
So move. Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Item thirteen point five, approval of change orders for infrastructure, seventeen dash zero two nine with major AV funds. Make your motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. And discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Ms. Reeves.
If you look at your property tax bill, one of the major things on the property tax bill is the measure AV funds that we all pay every time we pay our property taxes. Right now, I'm pretty sure that there are thousands of people in the Antelope Valley that are going to have trouble paying their second installment of the property tax bills. So therefore, I think it is incumbent on us to be very diligent how we use measure AV funds and be very careful in our expenditures. I'm wondering, thirteen point five, on the change order for over seven hundred thousand dollars. I understand the rationale based on the message we got today. But I'm wondering if that change order, if we could have it ditched taken and got that work done cheaper than the seven hundred thousand dollars. So that's my question before we vote.
Mr. Anderson.
Ron Benedetti is in charge of our Measure AV projects, and he can explain to you the process that we used.
First of all, me and Sherri, you can, you can rest assured that every dime that's spent, you spend it well. spend wisely, okay? The $700,000 that we spent here, if we went through the bid process, it would be, have to, for a separate bid, which means it would now be about a nine-month wait to get it done, because when going through DSA, we have to put it out to bid, we have to take the bids, then we have to go to DSA to get everything, we have to get, we have to design the system, go to DSA, get it approved, and on top of the seven, well, on top of what we would pay for that, then we would have additional DSA fees of probably about about $180,000 to pay to DSA. When this thing came up, it came up because the original concept, when we were in the design phase, for Cedar Hall and Joshua Hall were two smaller buildings. To save money, we incorporated them into one larger building, which increased the footprint, which now made one of our major switches in the way. So we had to move that. This cost started out at 1.25 million dollars, that we went through and negotiated with Taft Electric to bring it down to 738,000 dollars. And then there were all the credits that went on here that lowered that a little bit more. Going to, if I went through Cedar Hall and put it on that project, those are my two options, was either do it in infrastructure or do it on Cedar Hall. Doing it on Cedar Hall project means we would have to do that before we could do anything else, which would extend that project probably three, four months. Extending it out three or four months is going to increase the cost of that project exponentially, because as you go out, costs become more. Talking to the electrical engineer on that project, he estimated that if I did it within that project, it was going to be 1.5 million dollars. Okay, so we did our due diligence.
And I would like to add also, Mr. President, that by going to one larger building instead of two smaller buildings, we saved several million dollars in total cost to the Measure AV, which extends our opportunity to do other things.
That answers your questions, Mr. Reeves?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Item thirteen point six, approval of change orders for Sage Hall, seventeen dash zero three one with Measure AV Funds. May your motion.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Reeves, go ahead.
I'd like the explanation on this expenditure, please.
What was your question, sir?
I don't think he heard your question.
Well, I'd like to, same story on this, were the bids taken, or are you just going to increase it, or what?
The door hardware and access controls, those, to meet our standards that we have on here, so it matched everything else, the original drawings had the wrong items on there, okay? So we had to change those so that your access cards work on everything, and so it just, everything had to be incorporated, so they were typical, because we try and keep everything typical on campus so that we have fewer parks that we have to buy all the time, stuff like that. And so that was, that's where that came into, where there were certain changes on that project for the door access and hardware. And they had, there was one door that was, that was incorrect on the drawings, that was not, the most part of it was the, was the access part. As far as the second item, the power to the irrigation controller, we eliminated the irrigation, we eliminated all the landscaping on this project so we could do it in-house to save about, I don't know, 250 to 500,000 dollars, depending on who you talk to, but we're going to do it. And so we had to get the electrical that was going to be done by the landscaper to that controller, and so we had to pay the electrician to get it over there. So we added it to their contract, took it out of the landscaper's contract. So there was, there's another change order that you haven't, you haven't seen, because it was before you came on, it was a deduct for the landscape. The added north side tech outlet conduits, those were conduits that were missed by our electrical engineer to get all the information, all the data from the IDF and the BDF from the north side of the building to the south side of the, from the south side to the north side of the building. So we had to run that conduit, or we wouldn't, we'd have one half of the building with no data. Rough-in relocations. The third item is because on the drawing, it showed the outlets eighteen inches from the floor, the data above the desks, which makes it a little bit difficult for people to plug in their computers, because there's no holes in the desks. So they were all roughed in, they were all completed, and then the architect came out there and wrote an, wrote a bulletin that said they all needed to be brought up to comply with the casework that was in there, and so that's labor for them to raise them up.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Benedetti. Any further discussion?
I just have one quick question. I'm sorry, sir, I didn't catch your name, but in looking at these, these change orders and the increase in monetary amount, if you look at both of them, way over a million dollars, and then I think I heard you say that we will now do some part of the, what was that, some of the?
The landscaping.
Landscaping, is that what you said? Yes, sir. In-house now. So due to these change orders, and I understand change orders are inevitable, and they, they happen everywhere, but does this lessen the quality of the project, the end result that we're going to get? Because when, when I look at a million dollar, a million-plus-dollar change order, that is very significant to me. I mean, how, how does it reach that capacity?
Well, you have to understand, these are on two different projects.
I get that.
Okay, the $700,000 project, change order is on a, about an eight-and-a-half-million-dollar contract, roughly a ten-million-dollar project thing. That right there was because it wasn't figured into the project originally, that one. That was added to that project because it wasn't, it wasn't included in the design of that project, okay? Those are things that you, and sometimes you find stuff, whereas you're doing a project, when you start digging things up underground, you don't know what's there. And quite frankly, we are, we have a pretty good idea of what's under the ground here, but there's stuff that was put in here sixty years ago that wasn't recorded on anything. And so when you find it, like five miles of transite pipe that you have to take out, because it's all cement and asbestos, and you have to get rid of it, you don't have much of a choice, okay? So you don't know what's there, you find it, that's, we put in our, in our, in our pricing, a certain amount in there in case we find hazardous materials, and hopefully we're, we're right, because we're kind of guessing at some of it. On the, like the Sage Hall items, there are things that, that, that come up. Right now, you've got, I don't know exactly what the total amount of change orders are on Sage Hall. Sage Hall is roughly a $30 million project, and we're well underneath our 10% of change, of allowable change orders. Okay, by the, by state guidelines, by law, we're only allowed 10%, and so that's what we, we, we look at and we try, we do our best to stay underneath of that. Sometimes the things come up, like with the locks and stuff, they got missed. They got missed when it went through plan check, it got missed by people, but when, when our, our consultants were looking at it, because our standards are there. You know, they were written up before we did it, but, you know, we, we do our best not to miss things, okay? But change orders happen on, on construction sites. You know, some of them aren't our fault, okay? Some of them are, when they, all of a sudden, DSA will walk out here, and Dave Connolly walks out here, and he's the field structural engineer, and if he comes out and says, I don't like that, even if it's according to their drawings that were approved by them, and he draws something else, we got to change it.
That answers your questions? Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Advice?
I actually had a question for adding on to what you guys said. It's on thirteen point five, but it's item number five, and it's $549,000 for switch eight relocation. I don't know if I can jump back to thirteen point five, but can you just briefly describe that for me? Yeah, switch, switch number eight relocation.
Switch number eight is located on the northeast side of this building, or it was. Now it's located way over here, so it's out of the way of when the new building goes up. What it entails is taking that switch and all of its underground utilities, digging, if you, if you notice right down here where we have the path on the north side over there, where it was all dug up and trinched up, we had thousands of feet of conduit that had to go in there, to get over there so that we could power up the E building, library, admin in this building, okay? And so we had to take those, that switch, move it over there, move all the conduit, take the conduit that went to that, bring it over to where the new switch is, bring it back to all the other locations again. So you're looking at about two and a half months' worth of work that they've done, that they've been working on, and they'll be, they're, they're pretty much done with it. There's three months' worth of work for, for, I don't know, eight, 10 guys.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
And we're back on thirteen point six. Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Right, thirteen point seven, approval of the division of state architect fees, the Commons eighteen dash zero zero three with Measure AV Funds. May your motion.
So move. Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen point eight, approval of project assignment amendment to P2S Engineering Incorporated for Engineering Services, Fox Field Hanger Improvements. May your motion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Item thirteen point nine, approval of project assignment amendment to HMC Architects for Architectural Services, Cedar Hall Project with Measure AV Funds. May your motion.
So move. Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Item thirteen point ten, approval of project assignment amendment to Hewitt Zolars for Architectural Services, Campus Infrastructure Phase One, Project Seventeen Dash Zero Two Nine with Measure AV Funds. May your motion.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen point eleven, approval of project assignment amendment to Fonder Salari Incorporated for Sage Hall Project Seventeen Dash Zero Three One. May your motion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Item thirteen point twelve, approval of project assignment amendment to TTG slash IMEG for Land Survey Services, Discovery Lab Project Seventeen Dash Zero Three Nine. May your motion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Item thirteen point thirteen, approval of insurance program coverage proposal in statewide educational wrap-up program for campus security building, Seventeen Dash Zero Four One with Measure AV Funds. May your motion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Item thirteen point fourteen, approval for the Department of Conservation California Geological Survey Fees for Geological Hazard Reports for the Commons Project Eighteen Dash Zero Zero Three with Measure AV Funds. May your motion.
So move. Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Thirteen point fifteen, approval of project assignment amendment for consulting services, Labor Compliance Services, Palmdale Center Technology Facility Project Eighteen Dash Zero One Two, Golden State Labor Compliance with Measure AV Funds. May your motion.
So move. Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Item thirteen point sixteen, approval of project assignment amendment to TTG slash IMEG for Topographic Survey Services, Cedar Hall Project Eighteen Dash Zero Two One with Measure AV Funds. May your motion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Advice?
Approved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen, information items. We have six items on the information item list, and please review them at your leisure, because they will come back to us. Item fifteen, reports and announcements. Academic Senate Dan Ryder is not here. Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, Mr. David Adams.
Good evening again, Board. I'll make this very quick. Wanted to just advise you that the Federation has worked with the district to approve two memos that will take effect, I believe, immediately. The first memo has to do with the use of smart technology in the classroom. The idea is to give instructors more options to record their lectures and give students more availability, which I think is a very good thing, and is very good to work with Bridget and her team to draft a memo. We worked well together on that. And the second one was an extension of the, I want to say, the Fall 2020 MOU to the Spring 2021 MOU, and that should cover us at least through May, and hopefully, we'll be back in the classroom in summer, so we won't have to do another one, okay? That's, we all want to get back in the classroom, and, and I just hope that you guys have had a very good holiday season, and the Federation and its teachers are doing a great job to continue to provide the great instruction to our students that we have during these tough and challenging times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, Pam Ford.
Good evening. Happy New Year to everyone. I just wanted to thank the classified for all their hard work in serving our students through this pandemic, and I think that's going to be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Financial Management Supervisor Administrator Employee, Jared Simmons, no report. Associate Student Organization, Cameron Zabetta. Cameron, are you there?
Yeah, sorry. Good evening. So I just want to say I'm excited for the start of this new semester, and I'm excited for everything that's hopefully going to happen. I wanted to carve out some time to encourage our students to make time for yourselves, you know, take care of your mental health and your physical health, and just make some time for yourself and make it less stressful. A couple of major things is that the Student Center for California Community Colleges is having the Spring General Assembly on March. There, it's in Long Beach, but there is an online option, even though we haven't talked about it in our meetings, I suspect that we will be doing it, the online version. And there's some, hopefully, a local change for Region Six. And that is all that happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Antelope Valley College Foundation, Diane Knippel, no report. And Office of Superintendent President, Mr. Knudsen.
Just very briefly, we're looking forward to spring semester, which started today. We do have some good things for our students, consistent with statewide guidelines. We will be having some athletic competitions across spring semester, and this is good, not only for our student athletes, but it gives the community hope as well. We opened today at about, with our enrollment down about 8%. While that's very concerning, it also is consistent with statewide trends, and actually, we're in much better shape than a lot of our colleagues throughout the system. So I just leave you with that today.
Thank you. Board Member Comments? Mr. Shu.
I just want to say Happy New Year, and I hope we have an amazing spring semester.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey.
Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Reeves?
No comment.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines.
I just want to welcome everybody back for the opening of second semester, and Happy New Year to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buffalo?
If you get a chance and walk around campus, you'd be blown away by all the constructions. It's just absolutely amazing. And I was really stunned when I went over and looked at the Discovery Lab.